All right. Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:05 PM. Rory gave a few ground rules, but since it's now being recorded, I'll go through the ground rules one more time. I just want to let all the listeners know that only the selectmen and the town attorney will be able to speak during the meeting. Everyone else is on mute. The meeting is being recorded and the minutes are being taken. The recording will be uploaded to the website as soon as possible, and the minutes will be posted as soon as possible due to the limited schedule. So hopefully we'll have those up either Thursday or Monday at the latest. I'm going to do my best to moderate the conversation so we don't have people talking over each other. This is a very new format for us to conduct our meetings, so I asked that we have some patience as we work on all the kinks. If you would like to speak on a topic or have a question, please say your name only. And then what I'll do is I'll call on people so we don't end up talking over one another. Anytime you speak, please say your name so anyone listening knows who's speaking. We obviously all know each other's voices. But people who may be listening in from the public may not know that. Also, anytime you make a motion or second the motion, if you can please say your name. So, you know, Bruno, second the motion, that type of thing. Okay? So with that, we will start off with item number two, the Pledge of Allegiance, so we can all stand. I'll say the pledge, everybody just kind of go along quietly so we don't have that crazy echo. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so we'll move on to item number three, which is public comment. No public comment was received in advance of the meeting. Anyone who was listening, if you would like to provide public comments for this meeting, you have until tomorrow at noon to email it to Rory Burke at rberk@seamourct.org to be included in the minutes of this meeting. For all future meetings done in this format, any public comment received in advance of the meeting will be read into the record as presented and included with the minutes. All public comment must include your name and home address to be accepted. With that, we'll move to item number four, which is approve the minutes of the March 3, 2019 regular meeting. Do I have a motion to do so?
Go move, Bruno.
Seconded by Al.
Motion by Al, second by Chris. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, both aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Cheer votes aye, motion passes seven zero. So only say your name if you're going to abstain or oppose a vote. That'll make it a little bit easier. Okay? All right, first selectmen's report. This is going to be quite long, so get a drink and get comfortable. I'll go through the entire report, and then once we've gone all the way through, we can go back because I'm sure there's going to be a lot of questions. But let's take care of the report first because I may address one of the questions that you have. So just to start off, as of today, at 3:00 PM, we have 33 residents that have been diagnosed. And as I announced, yes, John Person has passed away due occasion of the virus. As you're all aware and were informed via email, I signed the emergency declaration declaring a state of emergency in Seymour, and that will stay in effect as long as necessary. Based on the information that we have, particularly that's come down from the president, it's going to stay that way until at least April 30. However, we do expect that it will go longer than that, and we're putting plans in place to be able to sustain this for a substantially longer period. Update on our office building and staff. I'll kind of go through each section. One, the community center, library, all town parks and sports fields are closed and remain closed until further notice. The community staff is working remotely, setting up virtual classes and activities, as well as a new newsletter that they'll be sending out to keep our seniors informed. It's actually something that I think we're going to use going forward. Within the few days of the center being shut down, we've had two staff members start reaching out to the seniors in town, just calling in on them, so that they've been doing that now for about two and a half weeks, trying to reach out to as many as they can just to check in to see if anything's needed, provide them any information. In some cases, it's just a little bit of comfort to those folks. So our municipal agents, Bonnie Wilks and Lucy McConaughey, our senior director, have been doing that quite consistently over the last couple of weeks. The library staff has been working to provide as much online content and programming as possible. They've been doing things with blogs, making book recommendations, doing different things, very creative during this time. They're actually going to start going back into the library one at a time to do some needed work in the library. So we are certainly getting a lot of hard work out of the folks at both the community center and the library. The food bank remains open. It is in a segregated part of the community center. So they are working at full swing. I know some of you, Chris, Anne Marie, Rob, have spent some time down there helping out and volunteering, so you know what's going on. It's a very important function for a lot of folks in need. I know some days they're servicing up to 16 families a day, so it's very important. We're trying to provide as much resources as we can to them. We've actually allowed them to expand out into one of the rooms that's generally used by the Boys and Girls Club, just to give them a little bit more space to not only receive food in, but then also to put all the orders together and serve the families that they're taking care of. Public Works is open and working at a full schedule, and the transfer station remains open on its schedule, but with no access to staff from the public, which publics only come out, it's an absolute diary. Steve Tony's due for the month of March and his plan for the month of April, I emailed that all out to everyone yesterday, so you have that for review. If there's specific questions on that, I'm sure Anne Marie can provide some updated on that. Town Hall continues to be closed to the public. All staff is set up to work remotely and have access to both email and phone capabilities and are able to respond to both daily. Most departments are in the building two days a week on a staggered schedule. We're trying to limit the exposure of our staff to each other. Every day from 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM, we do have a staff member positioned at the front door to assist anyone who may come to the building for service. Department heads are determining what level of service is needed and are scheduling appointments if it's something that needs to be addressed right away. We are not really taking any walks of any kind, so we are encouraging people to use online capabilities, phone capabilities, different things like that. The mail is being received and sitting untouched for three days prior to being distributed. So again, if there is any virus that is on the letters, we want them to sit there for three days to give them the opportunity to air themselves out. Payroll is running without any issue, and the bills are being paid as quickly as possible. We do get bills out on a weekly basis, but again, it's not the same volume that we normally have each week. So every morning, there is a 9:00 AM staff call with department heads to discuss any issues or concerns that they have, and we're consistently reviewing the structure and staffing to determine if any changes are needed. Each department also sends to Rory and I an email at the end of the day to provide a recap and to provide specific and updates and concerns, so that way we can kind of review things at night, be prepared for the morning for any updates. You know, I'd just like to use this opportunity to thank the staff that we have in place. Just about every single employee is going out of their way to be accommodating. They understand that these are very difficult circumstances. They're offering to come in, work on weekends, work different hours, work different shifts, so they've kind of come up with an all hands on deck approach, which has been great and helped us to be able to put these schedules in place to still try to serve the residents as best we can, but at the same time keeping all of them safe. I'm in contact with our service chiefs on a daily basis, so that is emergency management, police, fire, and ambulance. And the emergency services team has a minimum of two conference calls scheduled for each week in advance, one on Monday, one on Friday, leading up to the big calls from the governor. And then we will periodically talk throughout the week based on what the need is. The town and board of education custodian staffs are working together to make sure our buildings are being kept up. Town Hall, central office, and public works are being cleaned and sanitized each day, while the police departments, fire departments, and ambulances are being cleaned multiple times each day based on haul volume. They're also assisting Nogatuck Valley Health with sanitizing and cleaning as needed. I'm in constant contact with the executive director, Jessica, at Nogatuck Valley Health. And as I sent to all of you earlier, a daily public email blast is going out to provide updates and information as to the virus and its impact on the valley as a whole. That's something that Jessica put together in consultation with myself and the three other valley mayors to try to put a consistent message out of information, so there would be one place, one resource of information, so people knew where to go to gather that information. If you are not receiving that email, which I think most of you are, but if you are not, shoot me an email, and I will ask Jessica to include you in the distribution list. Just as a side note, we will not be releasing the names or addresses of any of those who have been infected. We can give some general information on them, but we will not be giving any specifics out to protect their HIPAA rights, but more importantly, just to avoid the cause of panic and things like that. So we're trying to control the amount of information that is being put out. If you feel you're not getting enough information or you'd like to ask more in-depth questions, I encourage you to reach out to Jessica at Nogatuck Valley Health directly. I will tell you, she is absolutely overwhelmed at this point with the volume of things that she needs to take care of, things that she needs to keep track of. I've offered to provide, you know, some staffing if need be, but unfortunately, because some of the, or I shouldn't say some, a lot of the stuff that we're dealing with is extremely sensitive. There's a lot of training, a lot of things that go involved in that, so we can't even provide her any administrative support. So like I said, if you have those questions, I encourage you to send her an email, and I expect she'll get back to you within a day or so with responses. We've received a series of executive orders from the governor's office, and those are being monitored and reviewed by Rich and Brian as they come in. I also receive a daily briefing from CCM as to executive orders and their breakdowns. There are two main things that is going to have to be addressed by this board. The first one has to do with the budget process, so we do have plans in place to address the budget. I know you will all receive this part of this packet, a memo from Rich. We're talking about how the budget process will work. Tomorrow, I will be sending out notice canceling the in-person town budget meeting. At our next meeting, we will have an item on the agenda to discuss the process that was created by the governor's executive order, which is seven I, which will allow the board of finance to vote on the budget. Again, you received that memo. Please review the memo, ask questions, whether it be to myself. You can reach out to Bill Zawiki, chairman of the board of finance. If you'd like to, you can certainly touch base with Rich, but try to route all your questions for Rich through me, so we can kind of keep a central hub, so I can provide that information back to everybody. Oh, sorry. So we're not bombarding Rich with questions. But again, that will be an item for discussion and action that will be on the agenda at our next meeting on April 21. The second one, as you saw in your packets as well, there is some correspondence. Rich has produced draft resolutions regarding the potential options for payment of taxes. One is reducing the interest rate on outstanding taxes owed. The other is deferring payments for a 90-day period. We had been waiting for guidance from OPM, which is the Office of Policy and Management, as to how these options might work, as the executive board was not very specific. We received that information late last night, so that went over to Rich. He obviously started to do some analysis of that. The big issue was, while we had the draft resolutions in place, how it would be impacted, how it would, I should say, how we would enact this executive order and to allow this to take place. So there's a few moving parts that we still need to go through. Once we finish the analysis of that guidance, we will send information out to the board. But again, expect that that will be on the agenda for April 21. We'll have a recommendation for the selectmen, again, for discussion and possible action. Let's see, we've done a cash flow analysis of the current budget to get an understanding of where we stand with some basic assumptions due to the Corona-19 virus. For the current year, we should be able to finish with our current staff in place and no need for layoffs or furlough days. We've also done projections for fiscal year '21 and how it might look, again, using certain assumptions due to the COVID virus. The biggest one being the potential deferment of taxes for up to 90 days for certain individuals. Based on the analysis, today I spoke with our financial team about obtaining the authorization for the town to be able to go out to get up to $4 million in tax anticipation notes. This authorization would allow us to move quickly should the need arise and cash flow become a problem. If we defer the payment of taxes, so if we don't get a large influx of taxes on July 1, we will have a problem of how we continue to operate the town. So we have enough money in our reserve to last us, but we do not have enough to last us for the entire 90 days. As you can imagine, the biggest chunk of taxes that come into town come in on July because you have not only the residential taxes that come in, but you also have a big chunk of the property tax, as well as the vast majority of the vehicle taxes. So the $4 million, based on the money that we have put aside already, should be enough to carry us through the 90 days, excuse me. We do not necessarily have to get the $4 million. This is just providing authorization to allow us if we need to do so. You're going to see, just about every town in Connecticut is going to do the same thing. They're going to have to prepare for the potential need of cash flow problems. And the concern we have is we already have a very challenging bond market. So if this does happen, we want to try to get in first to be able to get the best possible rates, things that we're going to look at, not only a bond issue, but we're also going to look at bank placements to see if that might be possible, so we're going to try to be as creative as we possibly can. Again, this is just preparing for a worst-case scenario. These tax anticipation notes, or TANs as they're called, are required to be paid back within 13 months of the time they're taken out. And again, they are tied to actual tax payments coming in. So this is not something that we can defer, something that we can put out, put off, something that we can stretch out. That's not how these work. They have to be taken out, and they have to be paid back within the 13 months. So we'll see how that goes. If need be, we could have our financial advisors on the phone on the 21st to go through that to answer any questions that you may have. So I tried to cover as many different topics as I could, tried to give you as much information. We've been trying to take notes over the last couple of days to make sure we're putting everything out. I know I've talked to many of you just along the way with different questions and comments and things. So what questions or comments do you guys have with regards to information that I've already given you or things that I did not address?
It's Trish. Can you hear me?
Um, you had stated, Chris Bowden's thinking. Well, you had stated that the
Chris, Chris, hold on. Trish, go ahead.
You cut out a bit. I heard you say 33 residents had been diagnosed. Had any passed away?
One. It was announced yesterday?
One. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I'm not on Jessica's list, by the way, if I could get added.
Okay, I'll resend Jessica everyone's email address, so that will be put out. I know a few of you have emailed me while I was talking, so I'll make sure that she has everybody's email.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Chris?
Yeah, I apologize if I break up. I'm getting unstable internet messages. But you had stated that, you know, per the president's guidance, the minimum we would have our state of emergency would be April 30, but likely substantially longer. Do you have an estimated time for how long substantially could be?
I don't. I don't. You know, yeah, that's the date that's been given. You know, in conversations just around the state, other mayors, other first selectmen, guidance that we're getting from different people, they were saying that this could last well into May, even into June. But, you know, we're going to be prudent. We need to make sure that we protect our staff, and we try to keep the residents as safe as we possibly can. So, you know, we'll provide updates in the beginning of May as best we can with our first meeting, but I would expect it's going to be well into May, maybe into June.
Curtis, Bob Finley.
Go ahead, Bob.
So with that $4 million, do you know how many other cities have already went to go for this, that money? Is, or we would be ahead of the game if we started off early? Where do we sit today with respect to other cities?
No one, you know, the orders, it's all new, so no one has actually gone out to get the money yet. I know in speaking with our bond counsel, Bruce Chudwick and Matt Ritter, they had had conversations with two other towns today with regards to that. So I think what you're going to start to see is at some point in June, towns are going to start that process, and it's going to put a strain on the market because it's not just Connecticut. Towns and cities, it's going to cities across the country. So the sooner, I'd rather be prepared so that way we can react and go right away, not have to come back, you know, put a special meeting together, get everything done. You know, that could take a couple of days at its quickest. I'd rather have it done, have the authorization at hand, and go. As part of the budget process, I'm generally authorized to go out to get up to $2 million in tax anticipation notes, but we wanted to increase that to $4 million just to have a little extra coverage. And we're going to go through the process because we'd rather be on the side of total transparency. The average person has no idea. I'm sure many of you don't even know that we get that authorization every year in the budget process, but we'd rather be upfront with everybody, so it's very transparent. Everyone can see it. We'll do it now before there's any rush, like I said, and then it'll all be based on the cash flow projections, which Doug is looking at every day.
I'm sorry. I think you just mentioned it'll take a couple of days to put that all together as a package to make the request. Is it?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else with questions or comments?
Kurt, it's Trish. I only have one other question. Is there anyone in town hall abiding, not really abiding, but one of the executive orders is offering the ability for people to, it's not exactly online notary, but to have someone live in Connecticut watching someone notarize. Or is there anyone in town hall doing that, or are we not able to do that?
I can't speak to that 100%. There are multiple people in the building, so if Leanna does need to notarize something, or Veronica, obviously Veronica and Leanna are never in the room at the same time together. So, you know, one could walk out and essentially with some social distancing, say, hey, I'm going to notarize this signature and show them, and then have that take place. But that's something that we could check into, Trish, and just get back to everybody with an email. That's not a problem. So Rory, can you make a note of that? Rory just gave a thumbs up, so. What else? Any other questions, comments, thoughts? Anything else, you know, that pops into your head? You give me a call, shoot me an email, whatever it is. Actually, email would probably be the best way because I could respond to your question directly to me, and I could send it to the entire board. Again, I know the FOI rules are a little bit laxed, but for things like that, we should probably still try to follow the spirit of the law. Okay? All right, good. So we'll move on to item number six, appointments. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointments dated April 7, 2020, as presented.
Rob Van Egan literally just held up a sign that said
Okay, so motion is made by Rob. Is there a second?
Second bow.
Second by Chris. Is there any discussion?
It's Trish. I think Bob Finley was going to replace me on strategic planning because his skill set for this next stage is better suited for what they need than mine.
Okay.
Bob, do you still, can I, Bob, do you still agree?
Yeah, I was trying to get to my mute button faster. Yeah, I was going to be added to that board, I believe, and I think we were going to change, correct?
Okay, all right. So then what we'll do is I need Chris and Rob to rescind their motions, if you guys could.
Rescinding.
Rescinding my motion.
Thank you, gentlemen. And then, so we're going to make one change with regards to the appointments dated April 7, 2020. We're going to cross off Trish Danker, and we're going to add Robert Finley to that. And obviously, instead of a reappointment, it'll be a new appointment. Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the April 7, 2020 appointments as amended.
Go move, Bruno.
All right, Bruno. Al, motion, motion made by Al.
Second by Trish.
Second by Trish. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? Abstained? Cheer votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much. Item number seven, tax refunds and abatements. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve the tax collector's report dated March 31, 2020, as presented by Susan Bowlen, our assistant tax collector. Motion by Bob. Your second?
Second by Anne Marie.
Second by Anne Marie. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Cheer votes aye, motion passes seven zero. I don't remember any of these transfers. We have no transfers before us. Item number nine is correspondence. There are two pieces of correspondence. One is a memo from Rich, providing information on executive order 7S, which is dealing with deferment of tax payments and the potential of, potential reduction of interest on outstanding balances. And the other are the draft resolutions. Again, those are provided as information for you guys to review over the next two weeks. And as a reminder, those will be on the agenda for March, or excuse me, for April 21 for discussion and possible action. Okay, so we'll move to item number 10. Rory, has any public comments come in since the start of the meeting?
Yeah, so I sent you an email. Fred Stanek submitted one earlier. I can read it, or I emailed it to you if you want to read it.
Nope, I actually have it, so I will read. Okay, this is an email from Fred Stanek. It is dated Tuesday, April 7. Came in at 10:32 AM. Rory, you got to mute yourself. All right, so this is an email that Fred Stanek sent to Rory. It came in Tuesday, April 7, at 10:32 AM. The subject is selectmen's meeting, 4/7/20, public comment. Says, "Good evening, Mr. First Selectman and Board Members. I hope everyone is healthy. I appreciate your conducting this evening's meeting in accordance with provisions of the Governor's Executive Order 7B as the same relates to the FOIA requirements for public meetings. I hope that the Thomas Seymour is still planning a public hearing regarding the 2020-2021 proposed budget. If so, the same could be conducted by telephone or video using Zoom, for example, or other electronic means. Once the budget is available for public review, I would appreciate it if you would inform me how to view the same or forward the same to my email. Thank you for your consideration of my comments. Stay healthy. Sincerely, Frederick D. Stanek." So that is in, and Rory, is that the only public comment? It is. It is? Okay, perfect. All right, so that will close public comments. And then we will move on to item number 11, which is selectmen's public comments. So just bear with me a second. Let me get my little pad out so I can respond. We're going to go in the same order that we normally do. We're going to go in the same order that we normally do. Um, so Chris, we'll start with you.
Well, first off, I want to thank the entire community, really, for the vast majority of people have come together and, uh, proving why this is such a wonderful place to live. Um, with the exception of a few bad apples, we've really come together and thank you to Seymour Pink for putting out morale boosting signs that, uh, are on a lot of yards in my neighborhood at least. Um, thank you to everyone in Public Works for, um, continuing to run the town very effectively. Um, we haven't really noticed anything different from that perspective. Um, thank you to the people working at various, uh, grocery stores, supermarkets, uh, fast food places. Um, you don't make the money that you should for the risk that you're taking. And I wanted to make sure that if you work at Stop and Shop or Wendy's or, um, McDonald's, that you're getting your just do, even if it's just an attaboy from some bald guy in a collared shirt. Um, we're very thankful to you for the risk that you're taking going in and trying to serve the community. Um, thank you to everybody who's been working with team, working with various charities, the food banks, et cetera, um, for keeping those going. And really, just thank you all for proving just being a wonderful town that I intentionally came back to a few years ago. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Chris. Uh, Rob?
I'm sure, uh, we're going to hear a lot of echoing thoughts about what interesting and trying times we're in and banding together is going to be important. Um, like Chris, I want to say thank you to everyone who's working so hard and making the adjustments that they need to. Also, for anyone who's not and knows people who are not, please tell them to get their act together because the sooner everybody does it, the sooner this will all be over. Uh, further than that, I want to say, uh, support your businesses as best you can. If you're not doing takeout, buy gift cards, uh, so they can use the money immediately. Um, contact team if you are unemployed and need the assistance or just have a lot of extra time right now and can help out. Uh, I've been helping to coordinate some volunteers for team. Chris has been, uh, between Seymour Oxford and Ansonia, and he has. I know, uh, Bob's, um, family is going to be helping out tomorrow. So you can reach out to me if you'd like to, uh, if you think you can help out in any way. Um, you mentioned the citizens that we have who have contracted. Uh, and I know there are people asking who and where. Um, it doesn't matter. They're they're just assume anywhere. Social distance, try to use the best practices that you can. Uh, and I think everyone might be aware of, uh, some of the things that have been happening over, uh, the Sushi and Walk, the, um, restaurant over in Seymour. Um, and there's no place for, uh, the negativity that's happened there. Uh, and I love seeing the defense, uh, that has happened and the support for that family. Um, I know Tom Haynes went over and they're supporting them, uh, a lot. Um, so it's, this is going to be an amazing time to see the way people are still helping each other. So it makes me, as Chris, to echo Chris's thoughts, makes me very, very proud to see the way this community is stepping up. So thank you, everyone.
Excellent. Thank you, Rob. Yeah, just to, uh, to echo those comments, I know that the Haynes family, uh, brought a thousand dollars over to, uh, Sushi Walk and asked them to pay for lunches or meals, I should say, for first responders, nurses, doctors, uh, you know, healthcare workers, anyone who's out there, um, you know, just to provide a free lunch or dinner or something for them. So that was a great, uh, great thing. And I got, uh, a call, uh, yesterday from the boys at Albertos. Uh, I guess someone had come in and dropped off, uh, a good chunk of money, uh, asking it to be used to, um, to assist those in need. Uh, so I put them in touch with the food bank. So they were going to make those arrangements to bring that money to the food bank to, uh, help provide supplies. So, you know, to echo both yours and Chris's comments of the community coming together is, it is great to see. And it is certainly drowning out the the few people, uh, who are not doing the right thing, who are, uh, you know, trying to take advantage of situations or just making absolutely ridiculous of comments and statements to, uh, to people. The Sushi and Walk people are are Seymour residents, just like, you know, all of us on the phone today. So, uh, they should be treated absolutely no different. And the fact that somebody made those calls, yeah, an anonymous call like that is just a cowardly act. Um, that's the kind of person that would hide behind, um, you know, being anonymous or is probably a keyboard warrior where they can go onto blogs and make comments. But, uh, the true people of Seymour, I think, have stepped forward to to publicly support them. And it's absolutely great to see. I think someone was saying that they called, uh, Sushi and Walk to put an order in. And they said basically, can you call back in half an hour because we're we're too swamp week in or now. So that's, that's certainly great to see. So, uh, Al.
I just wanted to, uh, thank Chris and Rob for making those comments. I don't, I'm not going to repeat them. Um, those have been on that Sushi and Walk. This has been on my mind, too. It's completely reprehensible. But, uh, like you said, the the good has far outweighed the bad in our little community. We've rallied together. Uh, that said, uh, Kristen and I ordered a sign from Mary Demming and Seymour Pink that's coming at the end of the week. So we see a lot of the signs around the neighborhood when we take a walk. Uh, we just saw them taking a quick walk, uh, before dinner. Uh, they're all over the place, so there's a lot of solidarity. That's what we want to see in town. And, um, other than that, I mean, I'm really missing spring sports. Um, it's it's rough. Uh, you know, it's tougher for people who are sick, obviously. Um, but I think we're doing the best we can. And the situation seems to be getting better. I heard from Governor Como that New York's rates are flattening. And so hopefully there's light at the end of the tunnel here sooner rather than later. It seems like Americans are taking this seriously, with the exception of a couple of bonehead states. But, uh, hopefully that doesn't make it drag out too much longer than it has to because people have made errors. The majority are doing the right thing. And, uh, that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Al. Uh, Anne Marie?
I got a list. No, not really.
We'd expect nothing different.
Seriously. All right. So first of all, I really need to, uh, thank our fire and EMS, as well as our postal carrier and as, as, um, Chris said, the the supermarket workers, the retail workers. But our fire and EMS, they they had a horrendous day yesterday. You know, we had the, uh, fire up on Skokorat, it's a brush fire, and then the ambulance calls, and it was nonstop last night. So they're doing a tremendous job plus dealing with all the, uh, emergencies we're having in town. Um, eight o'clock every night, the bell ringing. I don't know if you guys been been watching, right? Been watching every Saturday, every Sunday, every Friday night, the fire department's out there. They're ringing the bell. They're getting the support. The the community is really coming together. I know there have been some complaints. I've received some complaints. It's it's a community. People are going to complain about everything, but it's a way we're all coming together. Right? Um, Rob, thank you for getting me in touch with the people at team. Looking forward to going there on Thursday. Nicole and I are both going there. Yeah, that's right. 17 minutes to ring in the bell. And I hope to see everybody out there. Nicole was actually, Chris, Nicole was able to get, um, from the state representative people in the town of Seymour, all the elderly. So she's going to, she's been reaching out, checking on them by phone. Um, I did tell her that you were interested in that. So, um, I'm going to see her tomorrow. I know Thursday when we go and we do the, um, food service, the team food drive. So hopefully we can put you a list.
May I respond to that, Mr. Miller?
Uh, you may.
Um, yeah, I got the, um, I also wanted to thank Elise Wood. She got me the list that I asked for.
Okay, good.
She got that a couple of days ago, but I didn't know until today that staff is also doing it. So, um, I'll copy Nicole, I'll copy you and Nicole on the, I was going to send an email to Kurt about that anyway. Uh, but I might as well just say it here. Um, should we interact with them? Should I stay away? I don't know how we want it because we all had the same thought, but we're not really, um, it seems like we're all working in different areas. Um, Anne Marie, I'll email you and Nicole later, um, about this because I've got the list of all voters over 60 in town. But if town is already doing that, then I'm just kind of stepping on their toes. So Kurt, I'll.
The town's, I just, I I don't think it would hurt. I I really don't. Just keep checking on people. I mean, I had somebody call me today wondering when Kurt is going to put out the next code red. And I said, for, uh, well, to give us an update as to what's going on. And I said, it's it's all over Facebook. This person doesn't have Facebook. So I, I don't think there's a code red needed for that. There's nothing really to go on. It's it's, there's no change.
Right. A reason I, reason I ask about collaboration is because when I got the list, there were 72 over. Not seen, there's pages, 72 pages of names. That that's a lot of names. And between my daily work, uh, it's very hard to hit that many people. So honestly, if if only just to break up the work and make sure we get everybody, um, I'm definitely going to be sending something offline about that.
I I would think, um, if you guys reached out to, um, to Mary or directly to Lucy, they can give you an idea of who's been called. And if, you know, you said, hey, I'll call the S's, you call the T's, I'll call the Rs, that type of thing. Um, I think that would probably be very beneficial because to that point, even though, um, they have been calling, um, that's a big list to get through. So additional help, additional people making calls, I think, would be, uh, would be a great addition to that.
Agreed.
Yep. Yep. Um, and just on Public Works, Public Works has been going crazy. They're they're very busy. Kurt, you know, I saw you put out that email and I responded to, uh, Mr. Rory's email as well. Yeah, they're not, they're not slowing down. Um, if anything, they're ramping up. They're they're even busier because of the transfer station. Last Saturday, the transfer station was very slammed. Um, we agreed that we're going to keep the bulk to the third week of April because we can't take the chance because our public work department is so small. One person gets gets it. We have to quarantine that whole department for 14 days. It's going to shut down a department and then we're going to have trash, you know, on the streets. It it's, it's not, it's not worth it. It was a good idea, you know, to see if we can do it. But with this virus, not knowing how it's going to react and how long it stays, it's it's not, it's not worth it. It's not worth it at all. Um, I think that's all I have for now.
Yeah, just to to kind of build off a few of Anne Marie's comments with regard to the, um, the first responders, the chiefs are working very collaboratively with each other, uh, trying to come up with ways to segregate, um, their staffs, for lack of a better term, uh, to make sure that they are minimizing the, uh, close proximity they have to one another. Uh, the first responders do know what houses, uh, do have a COVID, uh, person in them. Uh, so when the response or for when the request for service call comes out, uh, they are, they know. So that way they can prepare accordingly. Um, they are taking large precautions just to make sure. Um, obviously, the the PPEs that are needed are in short supply, not only in Connecticut, but across the country. Um, they are working to be extremely creative, uh, to try to make sure that they, our our folks, our frontline folks are safe. Uh, and there are protocols in place if someone does start to feel sick, uh, as to how that is addressed. Each department's a little bit different. Ambulance a little different than fire, a little different than police, simply because they have, um, just kind of different responsibilities and things. And with regards to, uh, Public Works, I know it was in the notes. I'm not sure if everybody had a chance to to review those, but Tony does have, uh, the guys on two different shifts. So he has a a shift from six to two and a shift from seven to three. So he's trying to spread the men out. Um, only one person is allowed in a truck or a piece of equipment at a time. So if they are, if there's four guys working at French Park, they literally go over four different trucks. So again, he's trying to keep as much spacing as possible. A lot of the work, you know, as Anne Marie mentioned, and you'll see in the report, is focused on, uh, being outside. Um, so again, there's a lot of open space and and things like that between our men. So, um, you know, with regards to the transfer station, we're going to get a zillion questions, uh, on the availability of the transfer station for the next few days. So I just want to go over this so everybody knows. The transfer station is closed on Friday because it's Good Friday. It is open on Saturday. It is then closed on Sunday, which is Easter, and it's also closed Monday, the day after. So if anyone reaches out to you, um, we're going to put something out, uh, so that way people are aware. I think somebody was trying to say that. Um, and but just if anybody asks you, just so you're aware and and you know, so. Uh, but Tony said, anybody has any specific questions, feel free to reach out to him. He would be more than happy to, uh, discuss, go over any issues. As you can see, when you read that report, he has provided volumes of of data and information as to what's, uh, taken place, not only last month, but previous months, so you can kind of get a good idea or a good feel. So. All right. Thank you, Anne Marie. Uh, Bob?
No, I I just want to say, you know, we've never been through something like this before as any one of us. Um, and I I've been very impressed by the change management and the the rapid response that Seymour has been done throughout all the departments. Uh, you can't ask for any more than, uh, what we've done up to this point, especially with the unknowns of of how this occurred and and how we were going to handle it. And I think you look at our whole town in a in a whole, it it comes out in an A plus and all the effort that everybody's given. I want to call out Rob, um, for all his efforts of putting, you know, teams together for volunteerism. I think that was, I mean, he was spot on. He jumped right on it. And, you know, he's got lists of people already volunteering. Um, Mary, Mary, without question, went out and, you know, just promoted, um, more community type things. I'd call Mary Demming, uh, for her efforts in Seymour Pink, uh, right away. This town rallied together quickly, you know, rose rose over it. And when you're outside, you don't feel the impact of what it really, what's really going on. And, um, everyone's done a great job. So I just wanted to reiterate all that. I know everybody already said that, but had to say it in my own words.
Well, I I don't think that's something that could be said enough. We're definitely blessed. Um, we go, our our professional staff is really taking all this to heart and doing all that they can. Our volunteers, uh, have been exceptional. Police, fire, ambulance, I mean, they are all working together, uh, top to bottom.
I'm going to call Anne Marie.
How much love and support.
Yeah, I want to call on Anne Marie and and and, uh, who, you know, there was a couple of bottle of wines given to some of the caregivers in town and showed up on their doorstep, which I know very well and very impressed by all that. It's just a great community to be in.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Bob. Trish?
Well, I have the same sentiments as all the prior selectmen who have already spoken. My thoughts and prayers are just with all the residents and, um, hoping for recoveries for anyone who is contracted. And for everyone else who, uh, just to stay safe and hopefully, um, just stay healthy. Uh, goes for first responders, town employees as well. Um, also, I know the, you know, all of the selectmen on this board have been helping the community in some way. I had reached out to Kurt a little while ago. I, you know, everyone's kind of doing their own thing as they see a need. And it makes me incredibly proud to be a part of a board where we care so much outside of just the meetings and doing whatever we can to help our neighbors and and the town just get through something like, uh, Bob said, that none of us have really ever been through before. And, uh, I want to thank Paul for, you know, emailing everyone with some ideas that he had while everybody's trying to stay home. I'm, you know, once, I think everyone's houses by the end of this should be spick and span. And I I I don't know. Getting kind of hard to find out what to do with the, uh, the time trying to, uh, stay home. But, uh, we'll all get through it and be stronger for it. Uh, and lastly, since I'm now off strategic planning, you know, once things are kind of back to normal and, um, if there's any need for a selectman to be on a board, I'll be available to assist, uh, in a greater capacity. And that's all that I have.
Rory just smiled. His head immediately went down and he started writing. So that's been duly noted. Trish, thank you for volunteering.
I'll just keep going that we all know I'm slightly picky.
Yeah, sorry. That that's not what we all heard.
No, I don't like to waste my time with BS or drama. So let's just keep that in mind before you start throwing stuff at me.
That was Anne Marie, even though that that laugh wasn't prefaced with a name.
I love the delay there.
Yeah, that was good. Anne Marie, is there something you wanted to add?
You said this transfer station is going to be open on Saturday, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Close, closed, closed Friday, open Saturday, closed Sunday, closed Monday.
Okay, I got that. I'm just gonna put on Seymour Moms now, because even though I put out the transfer station is open on like 25 emails, and I put the schedule, I still got, do you know the transfer station's open today? I, I, yes, it's open today.
Yeah, we probably, we probably get two a day or so.
Yeah.
People just asking the question, so. All right, so any other Selectman comments?
No.
Mr. Perla, anything you'd like to add? You've been sitting there quietly soaking it in.
I, I just want to echo what an absolute privilege it is to serve the fine people of the town of Seymour. This is an outstanding board. You have great community leadership. You have great administrators and, and great leadership in the police and fire departments, the medical services. It's an absolutely outstanding team, and working together, you're, you're just doing a fantastic job for the men and women and the children of the town of Seymour. So I, it is my honor to work with her. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perla.
Because we rock.
Rory, anything we've, we've missed? Rory is shaking his head no. So that's, that's a good sign. All right, so with that.
Motion to adjourn.
Well, the, the motion was made by Anne Marie, and the singing second was Chris Bowen, for those of you that are out there listening. And Eugene says, "Thank you from the Valley Indy." That just popped up on our screens. With that, oh, excuse me, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Bowen's already got a bottle out. With that, we'll mark the meeting closed at 7:57 p.m. And Rob Van Egan says, "Ringing in four minutes," so everybody get out on your front porches.
Yeah, let's go.
Have a great night, everybody.
Night, guys.
Be well.
Yep, you too.